Meeting to order, tonight is Wednesday, February fifth. It is our council meeting, Mowbridge City Hall. Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Mound.
Here.
Cerny.
Here.
Reichert.
Here.
Jensen. Kim Nitz.
Here.
Carlson.
Okay, of next pledge of allegiance, I'll ask Brent to lead us in there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have adopt the agenda. Uh, if there's no additions or subtractions from the agenda, I'd look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Cerny.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Okay, up next, we have the minutes from the January eighth regular meeting, they're presented in your packets. Um, if there's no additions or corrections to those minutes, I would look for a motion to approve the January eighth minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Reichert.
Epstein.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Okay, unfinished business, there is none. Uh, so I'll take us into new business, uh, first is water wastewater department.
Good evening.
Kurt, how are you doing?
Good. Just got one thing here, it's a pay request for Sentry. Uh, their second request, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and one cent. They purchased some chains and flocculators for the water treatment plant project.
Just out of curiosity, what's a flocculator?
It's just a long fiberglass board that scrapes sludge out of the, um, basins, settling basins.
Okay. All right, is there any questions or comments on pay request number two? Okay, hearing none, I look for a motion to approve pay request number two for thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and one cent.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Kurt. Uh, finance department, uh, first thing is discuss and or approve the twenty-twenty-five insurance renewal. Um, our insurance agent is not here today, he's out sick, but there's a big bunch of stuff in your packet. Um, Heather, you want to tell us all about it?
Yep. So our total insurance bill for twenty-twenty-five is a hundred and forty-four thousand, six eighty-six. Uh, that is an increase from last year of twenty-seven percent. And we did, um, get some explanations for the rather large increase. So I, um, Jesse was planning on being here, but like, uh, Mayor said, he is out ill. So he did, um, we went over it together, but he did email me his, his thoughts to share with you all. So we did increase the property a little over one million dollars, um, this from last year to this year. So about four pi- four point five percent total in coverage to keep up with the building costs, because we've had some big projects. Uh, he stated that commercial property in general, in the upper Midwest and nationwide, is in its hardest market since the mid-fifties. So the costs are going up, but the coverage is staying the same. And the biggest reason is reinsurance, and they have experienced large losses in the last three years through wildfires and hurricanes. So rates are going up quickly. Um, the other one that took a higher than normal percentage bump for the city is law enforcement. So more claims are being filed in law enforcement agencies for excessive force, wrongful arrests, civil rights nationwide. So unfortunately, that also affects us here as a city. Um, so due to inflation, um, it, he feels like it's gonna taper. But the positive is that the rates are about where we were at in twenty-ten. So for us to fair, we remain fairly consistent pricing over fifteen-year time is a positive. Um, and he did reach out to other insurance companies, and they all came in at about ten to fourteen percent higher than the one that we have now, which is Travelers, which we had last year, and they were good to work with, so I don't have any issues with them. Unfortunately, but.
Is there any questions, concerns, I, I think, all of our building insurance, hate to use the word all, but I believe all of our building insurance is replacement with a ten thousand dollar or ninety percent replacement. So we, we did change that from, I'm not an insurance guru, but the value of the building to the replacement of the building, so we did take a big jump in that, how many years ago, ten years ago maybe?
Yeah.
We changed our policy, anyway, so, so yeah, we are talking about replacing the stuff, not just getting the value of the loss, so.
Well, then the other issue with it, um, is that we need them to come out and actually look at all of our properties, and we've been working on them to come out for the last couple of years, and they still haven't been able to schedule us in. So my assumption is when they come out here, we're still gonna be undervalued, so we could possibly see more increases if they ever make it back out here.
So, any questions or comments on the insurance renewal? So if not, I'd look for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five insurance renewal quote.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Okay, up next is another one, um, I guess I'll say it's new to me, but cyber insurance.
Yeah, so this is one that I had requested, um, Jesse and I talked about a lot. There was an incident up in North Dakota where a business manager for a school, um, had a, what she thought was a legitimate vendor contact her, and they needed a payment, everything seemed legit, um, and it turned out it was fraud, and they lost several thousands of dollars. Um, so I did have, or asked Jesse to just put together a quote for us, if you decide not to do it, that's fine. I recommend it because it wasn't that long ago, a couple of months ago, we got fraudulent checks passed. We've been dealing with fraud a lot in the last six months here at the city. So it's very possible that this could happen to us, and obviously, we're, we try to be very careful, but this protects the city um, up to a certain amount for those types of frauds that come in. Their premium is fifty-two hundred dollars for one year. Um, and if you do have more questions, uh, Jesse will be here, if you don't want to approve it at this meeting, Jesse will be here in the, at the March meeting. So we could wait, and if you guys wanted to talk more about it.
Is that something you guys want to get more input on? I guess so, one of two things, I'm gonna look for a motion to defer it till March, or I'm gonna look for a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to defer it till March meeting.
Second.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Okay, deferred, all right, up next, uh, looks like a public notice and approval of a temporary liquor license. Uh, Mowbridge Regional Healthcare Foundation, uh, looks like April third, twenty-twenty-five, for a Kentucky Derby Gala, um, for just a capital campaign fundraiser, looks like they will be serving beer, wine, and liquor at the Sherhaw event center, so I'm guessing there'll be lots of sundresses, big hats, and hopefully no beads, so, anyway. Um, is there anyone here to speak for or against that? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the temporary liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Okay, up next designate official depositories, um, in your packet, looks like Dakota Bank, First Interstate Bank, and South Dakota Public Funds Investment Trust. Um, do this every year, if there's no questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Okay, let's see, approve update to council chambers audio equipment. Um, information's in your packet, looks like we approved it in the twenty-twenty-five budget, and I guess Heather, from what you're understanding, we're getting people can't hear us a lot?
Well, I, the, I get complaints that on YouTube, people cannot hear the council meetings. Um, this also alleviates the issue, if we were to have Zoom meetings, um, for example, we had a, a housing meeting that we were trying to deal with a laptop, it was awful. Um, just recently, we had a PSAP meeting where we all tried to cram into one office, and it didn't work very well. Um, this would put a camera at the back of the wall, we could have tables sitting out here where people could have Zoom meetings, and it would also put these would be in the ceiling, back there and up here. That way it picks up all the sound, and you wouldn't have to rely on people talking into their mics, and it should improve the sound on our videos that people try to watch.
So any questions or comments? Um, looks like the quote is eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. So if everybody's on board with that as presented, I would look for a motion to approve the audio equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Okay, approve quote for library building project. Uh, information's in your packet. Um, Heather, I guess I'll let you break it down.
Yeah, so this is, this is to do the tuck pointing on the old portion of the library. Um, as you recall, um, I think I, I told you guys that we were awarded the Deadwood Grant for fifteen thousand dollars to get this done. Um, we have fifteen thousand dollars in the restricted library account, and then the foundation has pledged fifteen thousand as well, which leaves a balance of two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven. Um, it's the, the quote is a little higher, like two thousand roughly, than when we first started applying for the grant, because of course, the quote was outdated, so I suppose things went up. Um, anyway, so this is just for me to sign this agreement, get this repair done using these funding sources. It is not in the library's twenty-twenty-five budget, but I think we'll just watch closely, and we should be pretty close.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the quote for the library building project.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Reichert.
Yes.
Cerny.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Okay, approve cemetery deed, looks like there's one in the packet. If there's no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion to transfer the cemetery deed.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Cerny.
Yes.
Mound.
Yes.
Kim Nitz.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Reichert.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the new business, uh, now we're into discussion information items. Um, first thing is the financial report, I believe those were put in the boxes before the meeting. If there's any questions or comments, get with Heather later. Uh, building permits, none to report in January. Um, events and library report is in your packet, is MJ here tonight, or?
Nope, she's working.
Okay, I'll, uh, just hit the high points here. Or should I even do that? Um, I believe they had a, help me out, Amy, solid dressing, solid dressing making over at the library and some of the events. Anyway, you've got an upcoming puzzle tournament. Um, and line dancing is coming up, so there's a lot of good things going on down there at the library. Um, anyway, the handouts are in your packet, so.
You can always check their website for the, um, we have a copy of it in our packet, but, um, they've done a really good job of putting on just a, like a one-page thing of what's coming up, what's going on, um, down there, so always check their website.
And they always have stuff on Facebook as well, so.
Yes, and that's under the aquatic, Mowbridge.
Aquatic Center.
Mowbridge Aquatic Center, uh, Facebook page, so I would invite you to follow that as well.
All right, um, now, the big one, I'd like to do this one just a little bit different. Um, this is discussion on proposed ordinances for Airbnb licensing. Um, what I'd actually like to do is, what's in your packets right now is the very ordinance that was presented at the first reading. Um, that would have been in December. Anyway, this is the very first ordinance reading that was presented, that the council voted on unanimously. Uh, the second reading did not pass, so what I would like is if there's anyone here from the public that would like to have some input on it, um, speak on it, talk about it. Um, and then what I'd like to do is close that discussion, and then let the council members discuss it. Basically, what I'm gonna do is like a committee session down at peer in legislative session. That way we're not debating all night long, so I will open that up, uh, for discussion, so if there's anybody in the public that has anything they'd like to say, um, or whatever now would be that opportunity. Come on up, Howard, yes sir.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, I have no financial interest in the Airbnbs. What I get a packet with six certified letters in it, so I took a look at the ordinance. I've got some questions on that ordinance that I, I honestly think should be considered from my standpoint.
Okay, what?
For the people that have to live around them, and you people with problems to solve. If I understand it right, you got two issues here, you got long-term housing and short-term housing, are you close?
Yeah, and this ordinance would define.
Long-term housing.
Short-term rentals. This ordinance would define short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Our current zoning ordinance.
Well, I think you're, uh, trying to address this problem.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So I see over here that you got your, you got your, uh, assisted housing, and you got your long-term, you know, standard. Uh, they're risky business people, they're tough, it's hard to get people to invest in them. Right? Then you got your short-term housing, you got your motels, they're, they're hard to make money in, you're up and down like this. And then you got your Airbnbs. Okay? That's competition with the short-term. Airbnbs are, maybe short-term should consider diversifying, I don't know that that's a city balance that they're solving. But now we're getting into Airbnb, uh, would you even know where I live out there? I got one, I got one right next to me. I didn't get a letter on that.
That's in the county?
Huh?
That's in the county?
That's in the Coneston, Miles district.
Well.
You kidding, you don't reach outside city limits?
Current zoning reaches three miles, because the county relegates it back to the cities.
Okay.
We, and, and maybe they need to come in under our current, okay, hold on, now you just, our current zoning laws probably say they need to send out those letters. So they're not operating within compliance of our current zoning either.
Well, I'm just.
So.
I'm just wondering, you know, what, what you're trying to do.
So, so if that is an Airbnb, yes, by, by definition and by law, you should have gotten a letter out there where you live, on the hill.
Well, and one of the things I've noticed, and this is positive towards Airbnbs, is that I sit back off the highway, I look at people's backyards, okay? Because of the distance. Long-term renters or long, or owners, I look at, jump. All kinds of stuff piled in there, right?
Okay.
Once that become an Airbnb, it's all cleaned up. Because the Airbnbs are trying to run it the next day, it's cleaned up every day. I have nothing against them. I think it's a, I think they're better than any long-term care, doesn't solve the problem, but it sure as heck doesn't, you know what, my, as a, as a person living there, and they're quiet. And if they're not, you got your, uh, conditional, uh, zoning permits that can shut them down, right?
If that's a condition of the permit, um, well, okay, well, I mean, okay.
All I'm saying, I'm not, I let you guys make the decision, I'm just saying what I see on my side.
Mm-hmm.
I see nothing wrong with it. Uh, I see some potential for a monopoly in certain areas, by your limits, that you're setting on it, I'm just saying, please consider those before you pass it. I see a problem with me, if I was gonna invest in one, I would see a problem that I can't, I can't sell that to somebody because of all my efforts, because it's non-transferable.
Correct.
I can't give it to my kids, because it's non-transferable. Yet you got the ordinance on your, on your, uh, uh, conditional, that says, if they don't behave the way I did, you can pull it. So why you got it in here?
Because right now we're operating, and, and I'll get to that in a minute, but I think, I'm trying to answer your question the best way I'm hearing it. Currently, the only remedy we have is an old zoning ordinance, and I'm gonna get to that with the council as we wrap this down. This new ordinance would do the same thing, the mailings would go out, and actually, the new ordinance would only focus on inside the city limits, it would not go out there. Zone, this is not a zoning ordinance that we're talking about here, this would be a regu- regulatory ordinance. So the one next door to you, if the council passes this ordinance, would not be affected by it. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question right, I, I know what you're saying, uh, the, the positive spins is, yes, the, the good Airbnb operators are going to run a clean, tight ship. What I'm coming from, and like I said at the last meeting when we introduced this, was a couple of things, number one, to me, I see it as a housing issue. Um, I see it tie. No, I think limiting them possibly will, because I, I'm not looking at Howard Bergman buying three of them, I'm looking at Airbnb and corporate, or whatever, coming in and buying up chunks of real property over the course of time. Whether that happens or not, I don't know, but this puts us in a position to get ahead of that, instead of trying to play catch-up with it when you're losing all your houses.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You're not Hill City, you're not Custer, you're not Deadwood.
Correct, but they have ordinances as well.
Well, they have a problem with them, they're coming in, building brand new ones. You're trying to get people to invest in the houses that are here and fix them up, so they have a potential to go long-term or short-term. Right? Now you're granting two licenses, the one by the state for lodging, and the cities?
That would, well, the cities would just issue the permit, but the cities would force the lodging license on the other side, because right now, there's, there's nothing up on that, and I'd almost bet there's nothing on the Airbnb next door to you, if it is an Airbnb. Is, is there any type of lodging license, and if there is, good for them, but right now, there's no way of you even knowing that. So, I mean, you, you were in the liquor business, you know how some of this regulatory stuff works, so, you know.
Right, but I'll tell you, when I sold my liquor store, I could transfer that license, because it was worth something.
Mm-hmm.
And, and according to ordinance, what I read, you can't transfer it.
Conditional uses or this would be non-transferable, correct, so.
Well, I, I'm bringing it up as a, if I was a potential investor, which is important in Mowbridge, I would have some problems investing.
On the Airbnb side or the rental side?
The tax in the road, the stumbling blocks.
Okay.
I'm just saying, please consider that, people.
And that's why we're having.
Before you tie people's hands.
And that's why we're having.
Create monopolies, you have no control.
And that's why we're having these types of discussions, so.
I thank you for listening.
How about, Howard?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jessica Brockle, owner of the Support Circle, longtime resident of Mowbridge, grown, born and raised here, and also a property owner and landlord in the city of Mowbridge. First off, I want to thank you guys for this opportunity to have open discussions and conversations about this ordinance, because I believe it is going to have a profound effect on our community. First off, I want to start by sharing my disappointment in how this proposal of this ordinance was shared. There was no outreach to stakeholders or community members prior to the first reading, and following the first reading, there continued to be a lack of transparency and conversation with the community. Given the importance of a change such as this, I hope that in the future, if there are or, ordinances or changes, that the community is given ample time to understand, to digest, and to consider how these changes will affect the community in which they live. As you had stated before, you believe that this ordinance is going to really make a big effect positively for our long-term housing crisis, is that true?
Yeah, I'll give you that.
Okay, is there concrete evidence that you have found, or data that you have created or found, or statistics that show that the short-term rentals are the primary factor driving the housing crisis?
Such as?
Well, I'm just wondering.
Is, is there a, are you asking if I found data out there saying that this is a specific problem?
Yeah.
Um.
Why do you believe that by limiting and restricting the short-term rentals, that it will solve your housing crisis?
Because I believe it will keep all your houses from going into Airbnbs.
So this is based on an opinion and a feeling that you have?
Um, no, it's based on the fact that, as Howard just pointed out, there's other towns that are doing it, because they're getting, their housing is getting eaten up, Deadwood, Custer, Hill City, Lead, um, and there's some that don't have any of these ordinances. Uh, last year you had a, uh, bill that died in committee, House Bill, House Bill eleven forty-nine, that would have prevented municipalities from doing anything like this, which was all supported by the realtors. I'd say all the support, but most of the proponent testimony in that was from the real estate industry, because that's the direction that they see that happening, and yeah, in the Black Hills. Um, you've got a lot of tourists, you've got a lot of that direction. This particular ordinance came from the city of Phillip, so this isn't something we dreamed of, this is from just a, a bunch of ordinances that we've all looked at, and this one from Phillip fit the bill the most, so.
Did they share any information about down-the-road data that this has had an impact, a positive impact on their housing?
A lot of these ordinances are not that old, so, I mean.
So we don't know if it is going to make a positive impact on our housing?
I don't think it'll make a positive impact on their housing, I think it will stop the housing market from going the way of the Airbnbs. So, you haven't had enough ordinance out there, or enough data out there to say that it will be a positive impact, you just have communities that are getting overrun by Airbnbs, you know, at the last meeting, I discussed with the gentleman that by our ordinances, well, he had three of them, and now we've got notice for, I don't know how many are going out, twenty-some? You know, so, there's, there's a lot of them already in town, and they were all rentals, rent houses, as I believe, so.
How many Airbnbs are within city limits?
Right now, by ordinance, three. Or that have been approved through the, now I can go on Airbnb dot com and see quite a bit.
Absolutely.
So, so even from the ordinance side or the city side, how many of these are in neighborhoods that they had no hearings? They had no, no conditional use permits for zonings.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, but only three of them did, since I've been on the council, there've been four of those types of conditional use hearings. One was turned down, and three were approved.
Okay.
So, they're here.
They definitely are, and I think they're actually.
And they're in our residential neighborhoods, so.
Right, but given that Mowbridge is a tourism community, and relies heavily on lodging and availability to bring people into the community, I don't see how that is a negative. Having places for people to stay, I think it was just a couple of years ago, that the Chamber of Commerce had reached out and asked people to open up their homes, because they didn't have enough housing for the, the ice shushing tournament.
Okay, which is fine, but I also hear businesses say there's no place for their people to live, they can't get employees to, to move here, because there's no available rentals, I did call one of the landlords in town. I did call one of the landlords in town, because this individual reached out to me and said, you know any place to rent? We came up with a whole list, and, and there is no rentals according, according to that, for people to come here and work. So, do we cater to the tourism business one hundred percent? Or do we stop some of it and at least try to keep some of the rental properties available for, for the workforce? Cause workforce housing is a tremendous buzzword-
For sure.
In, in small communities, um, and even to build a house from the ground up for someone to live in is, is astronomically expensive, so. So that's where this is, is coming from.
Did the council entertain any of the suggestions that came out of the Mowbridge Housing Report? That was done in two thousand tw- or twenty twenty with the recommendations for incentives, or you guys doing programming to actually incentivize people to have more options for long-term housing? Have any of those been discussed, tried?
I guess I'm not familiar with any type of incentive that you're talking about, but we did have a full-time housing director just start on Monday, so. So that is something the city council has taken a step in partnership with the Housing Authority to start addressing this stuff, so. So yes, are there incentives out there through South Dakota housing? Yes. Um, did we hire someone full-time to start looking at that type of stuff? Yes, so.
I'm talking about deeper, so you guys actually hired somebody to do a community assessment, to look at how housing has fluctuated from the year two thousand ten to the year two thousand twenty. And I just received this document from Michelle Harrison yesterday, so I had a chance to go through it. Not one of their recommendations had in there to restrict short-term rentals to increase long-term rentals. They actually had a couple of very good ideas. They had developing a purchase rehabilitation program, develop neighborhood revitalization programs, acquire and demolish properties that are dilapidated. So the city has not made an effort to do anything with the houses that are actually, could be brought up to status, to be able to be long-term rentals.
Actually, we have, but-
I don't know if by restricting short terms, you're going to see of the positive impact on the long-term housing that you're hoping.
Okay, but in answer to your question, I will say, yeah, the city and, and we're gonna talk about some of that on the next item. We'll get to that, but yeah, the city and the county have worked together on demolishing some properties, probably about ten or twelve of them. Um, we have, the city has, I don't know, I'm just off the top of my head, but the city is setting on some residential lots that we've acquired through tax deed. So yeah, and, and these things are all gonna take time, but the very first step was that housing director, and then moving, moving those directions. So we are moving that direction, so I'm looking at it as two, two separate things.
Okay.
So at some point in time, and it might take years, these things don't take two days or three days. Um, it is gonna take time for these things to fully develop, so.
Mm-hmm.
But I have been, if you've paid attention, I, I feel like I have been trying to lay some of the groundwork to get some of this up and going when we get there.
In regards to your comment about the housing director?
Mm-hmm.
So landlords who work with the housing, Mowbridge Housing Department, and now this new committee that's been formed, there is some communication discrepancies as far as like what is housing rates? And actually, to participate in the housing program, landlords are having to take a lower rate of rent. So what is the incentive for landlords to participate in programs that offer long-term housing options for people that have low income?
I guess my first question is, who did you talk to at housing? Where are you getting this information from?
I work with housing.
Okay.
And I also, in, in-
Okay, so I'm gonna stop you there, because unfortunately, I don't feel like Gene always gets this. I've never seen you at one of our meetings, I've been on the Housing Authority Board for, I mean, I don't-
Six, eight years?
Yeah, so it, I guess I take a little bit of a offense to that when you say there's a lack of communication. I haven't ever seen you at a board meeting.
No, I mean, between Mowbridge Housing and the new committee, because you guys-
There isn't a new committee, it's the same committee-
Yeah, there's no new committee.
Okay.
That I have been on, I think there's a lack of communication or awareness of what the housing director is. So it's somebody who's hired by the city, supplemented by housing, to help manage our housing program. So, is that person going to be responsible for the voucher program? No, that will still be Housing Authority, but we will have someone who's going to help us manage it. Ram is still here, they're still involved.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I find it difficult-
It's two, that's, it's almost kinda two separate things that we're kind of putting in here together, and, um, I just don't feel like that's this conversation, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you for clarifying for me.
Yeah.
But again, back to as a landlord, I wanna be able to offer my properties to people who are looking for housing. But the reality is that the majority of the people that are coming to live here are very low income, and do need to participate in a program like housing. But for me to qualify for housing, I have to jump through certain hoops, and then take a lower rental payment to participate.
So that's why, so that's why you're moving to the Airbnb market, not the rental, is that a fair statement?
It sometimes makes more sense, because I'm protected as far as Airbnb goes.
Okay.
I have insurance on the property, if it gets damaged, I have regulations that they have to follow. But if I rent to somebody through housing, sometimes those properties get abused, mistreated, and I end up having to put in more money to those properties to get them back into-
So are you more worried about the limit on them, or are you worried about the ordinance in general?
I'm just concerned about the ordinance in general.
Okay.
I guess, I have some other-
Okay.
Points I'd like to make as well.
Okay.
So as far as the permits and the licensing costs, do you guys have any ideas on how much you'd be looking for permits and licensing?
We haven't got to that discussion yet, um-
Okay, I think that would be an important thing.
Okay.
And I'd like to know like what those rates are gonna be based on?
Okay, we haven't got to that part of the discussion, I think a lot of the scuttlebutt was they were going to be fifteen hundred or a thousand dollars, simply because-
We don't know.
Okay, we don't know, the council hasn't decided, when the second reading did not pass, um, we did not take any action on the resolution setting the fees, because the fees will be, in the ordinance, the fees will be set by resolution. So yeah, that is something the council is, is very aware of. And yeah, I'll be the first one to say, I don't think we need to go through a whole bunch of regulatory red tape and nickel and dime and gouge people. However, if they're in residential neighborhoods, I've, I feel like that's a way to protect your housing, and I'm not gonna come off of that viewpoint, but I also feel like, yeah, we shouldn't nickel and dime, or, or have staggering fees either, so. I think the driving force on the ordinance side of it is your lodging license, your sales tax, and, and those types of things, so.
Which you pay through Airbnb as well.
Okay.
Tourism tax, city tax, like, all, all those properties are still generating income for the city, so. Um, in regards to the transfer of licenses, this is another issue that I have with the ordinance. Um, is there any exceptions that you would look at as far as family inheritance or hardship? Um, because the reality is, is that I come afa- come from a family who is greatly invested in housing in Mowbridge. And if my dad has a handful of properties, and he gets into a car accident and passes away, say the week before the ice fishing tournament, and I have to shut everything down because I don't have a license, and it's non-transferable, how does that impact our community overall and affect the families that are in, investing in property?
I almost think you're getting into legal corporate questions on inheritance on that.
No, it-
You know, it does say it is-
Like a transfer.
Yeah, it's non-transferable.
Transfer of license.
So if, if you, let's pick on Howard, if you sell that to Howard, then it's gotta go through the same process.
Right.
So, that's, like, and like I mentioned to Howard, I'm just gonna pick on you while you're sitting there, Howard. But the liquor license has to be transferred through the, the city, so when Howard sold his liquor store, that license had to be transferred through, through the city as well, and I don't believe there was any, there's never been a hang-up on any of that. However, when the council decides to set a number on the limitations, if there's more Airbnbs than what the council decides to set that number for, then yeah, some of them probably will not get renewed. However, at the, the positivity of an input is what number does the council wanna set when we come back? So, there's other discussion that I think the council wants to get through as well, so. I mean, you, you keep going, but I think a lot of your questions are gonna get answered when we're done tonight, so.
Okay.
That's why I'm kinda trying to do it this way, so.
Yeah, I, I think the limitations on the number of Airbnbs, um, really kind of strangleholds the community of Mowbridge, and the business owners that are trying to bring more opportunity to Mowbridge. I don't see Airbnbs as a negative, I don't think that's gonna hurt the city in any way. If anything, I think it is going to create opportunity, um, for the city. And I would ask that you take that into consideration as you make your decision.
Anybody else have any comment, discussion? Questions, comments? Okay, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and just, oh, I'm sorry, come on, Dave.
Am I understanding that you guys are starting over, or are you proceeding this as a second reading?
No, this is just straight-up discussion, um-
But are you pursuing this as a second reading, or a first reading on a new variance?
Okay. This is a discussion, what is in the council packet right now is the ordinance that was presented for the first reading, that, that passed the council. So I'm, I'm starting over, we're starting over.
So does it, okay.
Okay, so, so I'm not gonna say, let's call for a motion to approve with everything everybody said, cause I feel like that might've been why it kinda came off the rails the last time, because once you start slicing and dicing and making changes, it doesn't, um, doesn't work, so. When everyone's done talking, I'm just gonna open this up, and I'm gonna let the council members talk amongst themselves. Like I said, I would do this like a state committee hearing, so they're gonna have a little bit of discussion amongst themselves, so we can be very specific as to what will come back at a first reading next month.
Okay.
So.
The only other thing I have is, if you have a client that's looking for a short-term rental while they're looking, you know, for their job or whatever, I have an Airbnb that would fit just about anything they'd be in, or as in short-term.
And, and I think they were looking more for a long-term, cause this was like a career-type position, Dave, so.
I know, if they're purchasing or whatever, it takes a few months, and I've got something for them.
Okay. Well, your name was on the list, so, you know, yeah. Okay, uh, anything else for anyone? Okay, I'm, if there's no one else, I'm gonna just close it off from, from you guys, um, thanks for all your input. Now, council, start, any discussion, any input, what do you guys wanna see?
Okay, I would like you to clarify paragraph two of section sixteen fifteen six. I still don't understand that. I don't understand how they can be subject to the limit, but not subject to the limit.
Can you say that one more time?
I don't, I don't understand how, tell me how pre-existing facilities are gonna fit into the limit.
Tell me the number you're looking at.
Oh, sixteen fifteen six, or six fifteen six. The number of licenses.
Okay.
I don't know what page it is.
All right, now, now-
Paragraph two.
Okay, vacation home rentals and bed and breakfast facilities already existing on Airbnb or similar site at the time of the passage of this ordinance may apply for a licensure within sixty-day passage of the ordinance, and if approved, shall be considered pre-existing facilities. Is that the one you're on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, where do you want the clarity?
Well, it says it will count towards the overall limit, but shall not be subject to said limit? I don't, I don't, I don't understand that. What does that mean?
If I'm understanding it right, and I'm not a lawyer, and maybe we'll get some clarity, but, was it Custer that put the restrictions? So they already have some. But they were, they were over their, their limit, so as they went away, they, they didn't shut anybody down, but as they went away or fell out, that's, that's what I think this is saying, but maybe that's why you need clarity.
So if there's thirty-five pre-existing, and all thirty-five do this, then are we capped, or because it says they're not subject to said? Okay, so when they say they're not subject to said limit, what they're saying is they're not gonna be held to the cap. But, we're not gonna take any more.
Right.
Okay. Gotcha.
So, so I think that plays to the limit.
Okay.
Do, now, do you think it reads that way, or would you like rewording of that?
I don't know if anybody else was confused by that.
I, I agree. I do think it nee- I do think it needs to be reworded a little bit, because it sounds like it counts, but it doesn't count. So, I, it, I feel like it cancels itself out.
I read it like a liquor license, like our packaged liquor stores, we have more than the population, so if that license doesn't get renewed, it goes away until we, until we get back down, so that's, in my brain, that's how I interpret that.
So I mean, maybe there just needs to be like another like sentence in there about that, um, I don't know what you just said, how you explained it, Gene, was actually pretty good, I thought. About how we're not gonna get any more new ones unless the number goes back down.
As they don't renew?
Yeah.
And it drops, to get to your limit.
Yeah, I don't know.
And I'm not sure, not sure where it is exactly, but I believe there was some discussion that you guys wanted to see home-based split out from not-home-based, or owner-occupied? Now, did you wanna set limits on that side of the house as well, or do we just wanna? I'm gonna pick on Mary, she's in the crowd, but I believe you guys are owner-occupied, um, you had your conditional use hearing, um, you know, if I feel real life, you guys sell your house, the next owner's not going to turn that into an Airbnb, so your conditional use will just drop off, so, that's, that's how I would see that, as opposed to the houses that are not owner-occupied. So do you guys wanna split those out?
I'd feel like the owner-occupied should, should be separate, because that isn't really affecting our long-term rentals.
Okay.
So much, I mean, they, they still need to follow the rules, but I don't think that they, they should be included in a limit.
Okay. Was that specific enough for you?
Yes.
Okay. So is there anything else you guys wanna see, discuss, comfortable with, not comfortable with? I guess, and to address this question, you guys feel the limit is sufficient, insufficient?
Do we have in, any like reasonable idea of what's here now?
Well, the number keeps going up the more we talk about it, um, I'm gonna say, I think we probably have twenty-five. You know, I'm just spitballing, cause yeah, like I said, you look at all the paperwork and the approved, the conditional uses, there's three of them. You know, since we started this discussion, and, and now there's, you know, we've got some more, uh, conditional use requests going out. So, and whatever number you guys are comfortable with. So is there any scientific formula that we cast dominoes? No, we just went with the city of Phillips, theirs was set at four, we figured our municipality's quite a bit larger, so, and then-
What if we went to, um, ten for the owner-occupied, that does not count towards the twenty-five, uh, as a total? So that would give you a grand total of thirty-five of them.
I don't know, that'd be something the rest of the council will have to vote on, but yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to any of the numbers you wanna throw out here, so. I think it needs to be reasonable, um, cause I think right now, we're already coming up on that number of twenty-five, just in your not, you're not owner-occupied, so.
Well, looking at, just looking at Airbnb, right now, there's nineteen places in Mowbridge, and that's just Airbnb. That's listed, they're listed there.
With, yeah, with Airbnb, okay. How many are actually in town? How many are actually in town? Have we gotten that number, do we? I'm gonna say that's the nineteen, I think if Jade zooms out on her screen- I heard, I heard one time it was like forty. Oh.
Yeah, nineteen's what's listed on Airbnb, I mean, that- Yeah, nineteen's what's listed on Airbnb, I mean, that, are all of them listed on here? Probably not.
So.
And then if you look at Verbo, there's eleven properties there, I'm sure some of them are this, on both places, but I mean, there's a ton of places online to rent through and there's, but, and also word of mouth and.
How many conditional uses do we get applied for?
A lot of people don't, and just a lot of people just don't know that it's a requirement. So I just think it's a lack of just knowledge of the requirement for the conditional use permit. Like Jean said, there's been four.
Yeah, and I think I was at three of those four meetings just to see kinda how it was going. And I think three of them were approved conditionally and, and one was not approved, so. I'm not gonna get into the who's and the whats and the wheres, but I mean, they all went through the processes, so. But the others are the only ones I kinda knew about, and then we started talking about this, yeah, even on my phone, it's, you know, so. So it's a, a new industry or it's a, an, an industry that's here, so. So while you guys are mulling over that, I'll take you into something else to be thinking about. Um, cause Heather did put it in your packets, our current zoning ordinances are maybe archaic, for lack of a better word, they have rooming house and tourist home. Anyway, that's the portion where you go through the, the mailings, the, the fees, the conditional use. Some of the offhand differences is, our current ordinance requires registered mail. So that's what Howard had, you know, was the, the registered letters. Uh, in the new ordinance, um, it's first-class mail. So we're still doing the notification of, of the neighborhoods that there's an Airbnb or an application for an Airbnb. The new ordinance would also, um, the applicant would have to have the lodging license and then that would kick in all, all that, the health inspection through the state. And I did write that down in my packet, but you can go look up the administrative codes and I think it's Title forty-four, which is the Department of Health on lodging license and things like that. I did look at some of the Airbnb, like, I don't know, that was one of the concerns, but anyhow. What is sitting in front of you right now is an older zoning ordinance that is in effect for Airbnbs. So, my question to you guys would also be, if we adopt this new ordinance, would we want to go in and get rid of this old ordinance? Cause that is something to think about because this is very, I'm gonna say costly to have a conditional use permit. And then if we wanna turn around and set the fees at ungodly amount of money, I mean, yeah, that, that's not fair either. So, there's something to think about. Cause I think right now the base on a conditional use is two hundred and twenty-five dollars plus all of the mailings that they send out, you know, to all the property owners, so you're talking three, maybe four hundred dollars per, depends on the density of the residential neighborhood. Anyway, I'm getting a little bit ahead of you, cause you weren't saying anything in the last discussion, so.
So, would they, how would that work with the ordinance, the zoning ordinance we have right now?
You'd probably have to go in and.
So it's not like they would be subjected to both of them?
Uh-uh. Well, that's what I'm asking you guys, if you wanna do it, or do you wanna go in and get rid of one and replace with the other? You've got a bunch of, uh, repetition, but your current zoning ordinance doesn't require the lodging licenses or any of that stuff, so. And there's no, there's no limitation, so, person comes in, they have the hearing, they get it, they don't, whatever. So that they're all individual, where I think this ordinance brings more uniformity to that type of, to your Airbnb, to your short-term rentals. But anyway, while that's mulling around, is there anything else you guys wanna be specific about on the ordinance portion of it? Cause the ordinance, I'm guessing, should you guys decide to go with the first and second readings in March and April, so then you'd have the, the twenty days, so somewhere, and, and probably in April, that's probably when we'll come up with the resolution will be presented. So it'll kick in the same, the resolution only needs one reading and that will go into effect at the same time as your ordinance at the second reading. So. So, go through the process for me, let's say, I wanna apply for an Airbnb, where do I start and how do I finish?
So right now, you would come in, you would fill out an application with the zoning officer, you would pay a fee. The zoning officer then compiles a list of, um, residents that are surrounding the property in question. They send out a certified mailing and schedule a hearing with the zoning board, the zoning committee. Um, so once that is set and the notice is published, then the zoning committee has a hearing on the conditional use permit. At that hearing, the residents who have received the mailings, if they have concerns or no objections, we also get some that don't have any objections. They're welcome to either come to the meeting and voice their opinion, or they can give it in writing. Or we have people that just come to the front desk and say, I don't mind. And then we always pass that information on to the zoning board for their input. Then they have their meeting and either they grant the conditional use permit or they don't. The zoning board can put conditions on these permits if they choose.
Okay, so then, tell me, what are the requirements for an Airbnb?
In the conditional use permit?
Just give me the short story.
None.
Is there no insurance, commercial insurance? There's no inspection, whether you have fire alarms or fire extinguishers or any of that? I would think those would be qualifiers for something like that, cause it's actually a business, right? I mean, I think, uh, I think you should have those things listed, those are part of the qualification, some sort of inspection. But I think in the, the spirit of zoning, I'm just gonna argue with you a little bit. Yeah, I, I'm just trying to understand all the pieces. Okay, but yeah, the spirit of zoning is just to make that determination based on whether that conditional use can be issued for qualifying. But we can have the zoning, but where's the safety element of it? If they're renting a room or you're starting a body shop in the middle of town, or I mean, I mean, where are those things? That this Airbnb needs to be inspected if it's, I, I would say, and I, I don't know this, but if, if you're living in the house, your Airbnb in the bottom, you're probably gonna be pretty good. But if it's a house that's on the other side of town, that, you know, those guys are doing whatever, I think you should have some sort of commercial insurance. You know, some, some sort of liability insurance, I don't know what, can you tell us what the, for Airbnb, does your commercial insurance want more for that?
Um, the. If it's owner not occupied, it, it, it's what it's listed as, it's nothing more. You know, it's just a, it's not the owner, it's someone besides the owner in, in the property.
See, I, I think, and I don't think it's a, I, I think it's a safety issue, whether if you're renting in a motel or if you're renting in a house. You should have some sort of inspection saying that it's safe. I mean, there, there should be some sort of inspection, I, I mean, I think that's a short story.
The state comes in and inspects the mortality area.
You know, so you've talked about section eight housing, and you're doing that, you have to have railings, you have to have fire protection, you have to have, uh, uh, certain types of things around your water heater.
Yeah.
You have to have updated electrical panels, right? You have to have, um, um, ground fault plugins. Are those, are all those bases being met in these things? Cause for me, as far as the Airbnb goes, it's your property, you should be able to kinda do what you want with it. If the neighbors say that you can do that, but I think all these other things fall into play too. So.
Would they have an inspection fee just for that? When, when you apply for the air, you know, for the permit, an inspection is part of that, isn't it?
Yeah, um, that's, I just found my notes. I'm just catching up on all this, I was, I've been going.
As an Airbnb owner, like I have no problem with getting it inspected, in fact, I would rather have it inspected by the state, you know, as part of the lodging license, because I wanna be able to tell people that it has been inspected, it's done annually or whatever. And so, I don't know if like you're trying to link that to the conditional use permit, is that what you're trying to do?
What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to understand everything that we want.
Okay.
The short answer is. And for me, that's a piece that I want, I, I would like to see some sort of inspection, some sort of safety protocol, that it's there. Not only for the liability of the homeowner, but the liability for the city, cause we didn't force anything. So, if some, somebody gets burned up and they're looking for somebody. So, so when you guys, so, so when you guys sat through that conditional use permit, none of that came up? It was just your house and, and you, you're, 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 you're in a, I'm gonna say an R, R-one residential, rooming, boarding, lodging houses, yeah. So you fit into that, you had your conditional use permit, I don't even know what conditions were put on the, the, the use. Um, so now, you come into the ordinance, when you come in to apply for the Airbnb ordinance, one of the things is a copy of the lodging license issued by the department, obviously a copy of the owner's sales tax license, um, copy of the property owner's, uh, insurance coverage reflecting endorsement of the short-term rental. Um, then of course, there's, you know, a few other things here. But what I did, my, my real bill-paying job, I work for a regulatory agency, so I, I like to read regulations on occasion. But I think where your stuff fell in was in administrative rules, which kinda comes under the Department of Health, which is forty-four zero-two-zero-eight. That's the whole chapter and, and title. So that is where to register by ordinance as an Airbnb in the city of Mowbridge, when you come up to that window, you've got to have that inspection.
You have to have that prior.
Correct.
Have that order to get the order to the.
The, the license from the city, should this ordinance come through? So that's, I believe what Kyle, that's, that's the other intent of the ordinance, so.
Well, can I just say one thing? What I would love to see is, let's do the annual inspection on the Airbnbs, have, have that be in the ordinance. But then, you know, we take it to the city and it's twenty-five dollars then, every year that you get it done for the city. Because you're gonna have to pay for that lodging license every year. And but then that's like a piece of mind for the city too.
Okay, and those are things that, that the council can kick around when we're discussing the fees and, and that type of stuff. So, I, I think we'll answer all of those questions with this, and I don't know if I'm answering your question. But, you have to pay for that lodging license inspection annually, so.
What I'm just saying, that's fine, you know.
Okay, but I think we'll get to that probably in the next couple of months when we start talking about the renewal fees. Like, you know, liquor license renewal fees and, and that type of stuff, so. And that's what I had said earlier, I think we need to bear in mind, we can't just nickel and dime people, so. I think maybe you'll get your question answered, you know, as we move forward there, so. Did I confuse you that much more, Kyle? No, I'm as confused as I can get, so let's keep going. Okay, okay.
Well, the, the other thing that, I guess, um, for me, that, that I see in the ordinance that I like, which we don't have with our current zoning ordinance, is that for that renewal process, um, under six fifteen eight, when it talks about suspension or, um, revoking a license, concerns expressed to the city about the operation of the short-term rental, including not, nuisance issues, noise complaints, safety concerns, et cetera, could be a reason for non-renewing a license. Right now, I feel like if you have an Airbnb in your neighborhood and it's got a conditional use, that's it. And I mean, really, those people are in, I mean, I'm speaking from experience, yes, I know I live next to Mary Freed, but it's not Mary Freed. Um, I'm speaking from experience that, you know, there are, there are many times that I have called because the dogs are, you know, using the city park as a dog park and, and then those people are gone in a week. And so like, you know, what do you do? And yes, I've talked to the homeowner, but I mean, in reality, they don't know when they, you know, have a group of hunters come in that, that they're not gonna take care of their dogs. And so for me, that's a huge issue. Um, I, I would like the neighbors to have some kind of recourse at the end of a year to say, hey, you know what? This homeowner has not done a good job of managing their guests. And that's really what it is. You know, their guests, they're not, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that I would have the same complaint with friend. If I lived next to him and I found, you know, fish guts in my garbage can all the time, I'd be like, hey, you need to manage your guests a little bit more. So, that's one part of the ordinance that I like, that is missing from our current zoning.
Can I also, um, ask, so if you put a cap on, on the number of Airbnbs and it's twenty-five, um, and there are other people who want to be Airbnbs, what is the process for that going to look like? I mean, is it gonna be like, I have to call down daily to the city to see if somebody has dropped off the list, or is that spelled out in any ordinance?
Would you have to call down daily?
I mean, or, you know what I mean?
You know, I know what you're saying. Um, I guess we've never gone down that road, but in, in my mind's eye, if you came in and said, hey, I wanted to do another one, and they pulled out whatever book or wherever this was being held at and said, yeah, we're already over our limit, you know, sorry, um.
Well, you could have a list, you could have a list of property owners that are interested, and if you're number one on the list, you're the next person that gets called when one drops off.
And I'm not gonna, you know, like I say, city hall would probably do that, but.
So you'd have to go and get your lodging license prior to that in order to know if you're going to be approved by the city, right? I mean, how are you gonna know?
Fair question, so yeah.
So you have to get an ordinance.
So. So, so maybe that's a challenge this council needs to come up with to allow for some growth or, or, or not, so. We're back to the number, you know, versus what we've got. That's how I see an answer to that question in the short term. Cause I think at some point, word will get out that, yeah, we're full, we're not doing anymore. Um, just like right now, you, you know, and it's, we're gonna get off topic a little bit, but you can't go apply for a liquor license and open a liquor store. Cause the state won't issue another license, just cause the population. Um, and I don't know what the magic number for the state is, but I have been here long enough to see some of them drop off. So yeah, if you called the Department of Revenue and said, I wanna open up a liquor store, they'd say, we're not gonna give you another license. And I don't even know if they'd call you if one came open, actually, you'd have to go buy one and we transfer it through here. I don't know if that answered your question exactly, but I, I, I see that in the same thought process.
Are you asking, how would you know if there were any licenses with the city of Mowbridge available before you went through all of the work?
No, like if you are, if they've already have the cap, and how are you gonna know if somebody else has not decided to do an Airbnb out of that original twenty-five? You know, is there gonna be something like published or, you know?
I think the plan is to have like a renewal, just like we do our liquor licenses, so whoever doesn't get renewed, that would be an old. So.
So, and then is that, when, like, when will the dates be, like, when will people be expected to get their lodging or their Airbnb license? Is this like beginning of the year?
Fiscal year, just for better bookkeeping down here.
So I believe that's how we do all the liquor licenses usually.
So you start your renewal like, say, December one, and need to be renewed by January one.
Is that prorated then, if you, you know what I mean?
Depends on what the fees are, I suppose. I'll write that down as a list of questions.
Mayor, I had a question, and I am not gonna come up, I'll talk from here since everybody else has, but, for those that you don't know me, I am Jamie Dederle, and I am the new executive director of housing. So Jess, thank you for your comments and diving into the housing study, cause I actually was into that, um, the past two days, I started my new petition. Um, and one point on the number of rentals, just the housing study did say we are down forty-seven rentals. And I'm not saying this to the Airbnb, but all the points you did make, those are things we are going to work on with the city on, divided licensed properties, looking at lots we have, along with the whole scope of housing. So, that is in the works, so the council is being proactive on that. Um, the one thing I would ask, and Jess brought this up, and I think it's something that should be looked at, and maybe you guys don't want me to say this here, we could get talked about it during that office hours. But, for the council to consider transferring for families, like Jess made a good point, if her dad passed away, you know, she's, you know, right there. So, would they go to her, or is that whole family out of all those, same with Freed's? Would if one of Freed's kids wanna take over theirs eventually? Um, I know Kylie don't have Airbnbs, but he has rentals, would they would turn those into Airbnbs? And his boys or grandkids or whoever wants to take those over, are they eliminated just because that one owner is not? You know, that's just something to consider. If you see what I'm saying? You know, that's just something to consider. If you see what I'm saying. If it's a bloodline, it's already in the family, and that family member wants to keep it going, or, I mean, through death, I would think it's a pass, that's a, you're right, it's an attorney question. Um, I would think they still gonna maintain those.
Jess should just be listed on their corporate.
Yeah.
On their LLC.
But, but according to the city, is that gonna let that happen still?
Oh, she's listed on the LLC with you.
But for the licensure, do you know what I mean? Per property, you have to apply for a license, so if he passes away, he loses, say.
If you're part of the LLC, you're part of the owner, right?
Yes, but, so I would be, so he can put multiple people on the license?
I'm an owner, I'm sure you could. You go through ownership, I would guess, I don't.
So that's, that, yeah, then that's a good point, cause that's what I was just kinda wondering too. I know there's legalities, but, um, even being like if she's an heir to his estate, or whatnot, or whoever, your siblings, you know, I would think it would continue, but if you're saying, well, now Dave Aitner's not here anymore, so, it just goes away, you know, is that, I don't.
I, I think that's a fair question. I think that's a legal question. I'm not gonna get too much into it, cause you didn't come up here, so the listening audience has no idea what you said. Um, so, well, that's why we are buying a new sound system.
I'm gonna get everybody.
Um, so now people will be watching YouTube thinking, I'm insane talking to, nobody asked me a question. But, anyway, um.
Can I interrupt you just a sec? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to the people who have Airbnbs that are in the audience. When you look at this ordinance, what really is your big beef with it? Is it the number? Is it the, what, what is it? What, what is it that you don't like about it?
Being non-transferable and the price of it? Why isn't it a hundred dollars instead of a thousand?
But that's not in the ordinance, right? So I'm talking about just the ordinance. The price isn't in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Just the ordinance, what we're talking about today. Just the ordinance. What, what is the complaint with it?
Mine was with the wording between the, what the lodging license said and what the ordinance said. And so if that is, and I haven't read the new one, and so I'm hoping that has already been cleared up, so.
Well, there is no new one, that's before the council's, what, the fir-, is what we had before. So that's why we're kinda having some of this, is to clear some of it up. So what, so now say again what your concern was?
The difference between what the lodging license wording is and what the ordinance is.
Okay. Cause you were saying, the state was telling you you're an Airbnb, or a bed and breakfast? Okay. So back to Amy's question, I mean, so the, the fees, this says in here, the fees will be set by resolutions, we haven't even got to that yet. So this is just the limitation, the lodging license and, and that type of stuff. So, that's, yeah.
Well, it's kinda scary to think about something being licensed and have a cost attached to it, but we have no idea what that cost might be, or any control on what that cost might be down the road. So that's kinda scary to butt out there, hey, you're gonna do this business and we're gonna let you know how much it's gonna cost you. That brings fear to me, cause I can't control my costs. And then those input costs that I have for my rentals or Airbnbs, I can pass on to my renters, to my short-term and long-term.
Okay. So if we make all this jive out, would we want that fee resolution at the second reading in April? That way, based on your, your effect periods for your publications, that would all come into the same time. So, I'm, and I'm thinking we can also start the discussion on the fees at the March meeting, if you guys are okay with that.
And can you base the number on, like, population, you know what I mean? Like, say it's ten percent of what our population is, so that would give us three, you know?
Okay.
I mean, that would make more sense and give you a number in your head, and it would be easy to track.
Okay.
And as our community grew, then you make those adjustments, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Another problem I've seen was the, the year, you know, fishing people, you know, for the tournament, all that stuff, book year after year after year. How can I book somebody now for the fishing tournament when I don't know if I'm gonna have a license the next year? Why isn't it a three-year permit, or five-year permit, or something along that line?
Yeah, so you could still require the lodging license every year, the lodging license every year, but, but let people.
Okay. Ahead, cause people can figure it out.
I'm, well, I don't think.
I can't wait till he's sent, he's a fisherman, that he has a room, that he'll never find one, you know?
I, I, I think we're bordering on, for lack of a better term, fear of the unknown. And I don't think it's this council's intention to say, oh, damn Dave, sorry, we're not gonna renew you this year. Um, I.
Well, I guess my thought on that is, if you're following the rules, doing what you're supposed to do, don't, and don't give a reason for your permit to not be renewed, you can plan on having a permit. You don't do that, then that's the consequences.
But, but, but.
It would be the very same with the liquor license though, right? I mean, we renew that every year. So, a bar owner could technically say to us, well, I'm not gonna open a bar, because I don't know if I'm gonna get my liquor license every year, yeah.
A thousand dollars, would that all, all for a ten, you know, Airbnbs?
I know, but you still have a business. I mean, I'm gonna tell you as a neighbor, I would stick pretty tough to the year.
Yeah, if I can't book through VRV or whatever, you pay partial down as it gets closer, till the date when I cancel, they penalize me for not furnishing something.
So I would say that's the risk of doing business. We all take risks. But as a neighbor, I, I would say, I, my main thing about it is, I'm protecting the neighborhood. And if you've got somebody who's not managing their property, I think those neighbors should be able to come in and say, that this property hasn't been managed. I mean, that's just my feeling. There's a whole council up here, but that's just how I feel about it.
Like I said, I think you're getting off on fears of the unknown, that we're just gonna say, nope, they can't do business. I, I think we're getting a little bit off track on that. Um, like Amy said, it's the liquor licenses. I don't think we've never not renewed a liquor license, you know? We, we call for renewals, obviously, yes, there's some by state law that didn't get it in, we can't go back on that. But we've never said, nah, we're not renewing this license. Matter of fact, I don't think we've had anybody come in and complain about a bar owner. So, so it's, I'm picking on the bar owners, but it's up to that business person to run the business. Um, like the gentleman said, some of them are cleaner. In his neighborhood, they're cleaner, they got the junk moved out of the way. They're running, you know, a, a better business. So, so that aspect of it, but that's on the business owner. So, that's my interpretation. I think I'm echoing kinda what Amy's saying. Um, but yeah, the fear of just saying, nah, we're not gonna renew them, cause we're not, is not in the realm of possibility. It's, it's.
There needs to be a, there needs to be a reason for, to not renew. It's not, we're just not going to not renew it because I don't like your hat. You know, it's, as long as we, there's not a reason to not renew, then, then there, I mean, there's really no concern.
So like Amy said, if there's a line up there a mile long of, of the neighbors complaining about dog waste in the park and fish guts in, in the trash can. So, yeah, now you're back to the true intent of zoning, you're protecting your residential districts for the people that live there. So, so that gives those, those neighborhoods that protection on, on that side of it, so. Is there anything else you guys wanna see, go over, um, discuss?
I guess what I'm hearing primarily, the main complaint to the ordinance part of it, is the number. So, I don't, I don't know what the answer is there. What number do we, do we pick? Um, are we gonna have a limit? So I, that, I, I don't know, I'm still up in the air of where we're getting the numbers from.
And something to think about too, on Airbnb, I know that there are, there's a gentleman who has probably four listings on Airbnb, and his are all stay in a room with this person. And so, um, you know, how is that gonna count as well? But I just want that to be in mind when you're deciding this.
I think that would probably fall under your owner occupied's when we split those out, so.
But he's got, I think he's got two different properties, so.
Well, one will have to be owner occupied and one won't, if he's living in one. I mean, that's, that's how I'm seeing it, just.
So what do you have to do? I mean, I'm just wondering how it is just gonna work against account? You know, is he gonna have to have four licenses then, if he rents out four rooms?
In four different houses, my interpretation, yes. Four rooms in one house, I believe the one house would be your Airbnb. But that's how I'm hearing what you're, you're saying. So. Anything else from the council? So right now, we're stuck on the magic number, and I don't know that there's a scientific formula for that.
I don't need, sorry, I don't need, um, they go, they, it's seven and a half percent of the population, which is a lot.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I just, I took three, I took three thousand people, they did seven, seven point five, and that's a lot. So I don't know where they came up with that number, um, but I know they're a tourist town up there too, so I don't think we want seven and a half percent.
So what would that be?
But that's, I mean, that's a, that's a big number, but.
Two hundred and twenty-five, maybe, so.
Yeah, but I don't know where they come up with that number at, but I don't think they're allowed that many, but, you know.
One, she said one percent, yeah, sorry, not ten percent.
I don't know where the slide one, the other, you say, I don't know what that number is, but.
Okay, so. But yeah, it's, it's a, I think this is a fairly new industry, and we're trying to get out ahead of it before it's ahead of us.
Yeah, one percent would be thirty-three, that's what I was, I was on.
Well, and I don't know what your population.
Okay. Curtis, what do you got?
Oh, I just was wondering, do we have like thirty-four residents in Mowbridge, or houses?
We have what?
Do we have like a thousand four hundred residents, or, what's our house numbers in town?
Oh, I don't know how many houses are in town.
Well, not, not that, but um, basically, we have about thirty-four hundred, thirty-five hundred people in town, roughly, thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two.
Uh, how many, like, when you have individual dwellings?
Like a water bill? Yeah.
Like dwelling places you have town?
So, everybody wants to know where the number came from. So, we drafted this off the city of Phillips ordinance, because we liked the verbiage. They have four. They have a population of approximately five hundred people. That's where this twenty-five came from.
So you did it off of population?
Yeah, population and what Philip did, because that's what we were modeling this of. And that's just something to start with.
Well, see, I was thinking about, instead of population, what are dwellings? Because it all comes down to the house, you know, not so much the amount of people that live here, but the amount, how amount of houses we have that actually have water bills, pay electrical bills. How many of those?
You've also got apartment units in that too, so.
Yeah, you know what I mean? As to get a better grasp of what the percentage would be, you know what I mean?
I know she sends out eighteen hundred water bills, but that includes, um, commercial.
Commercial too.
But we did get the number, right?
Yeah, I mean, a general number, you know, and take it off that percentage, or, you know, just as an option, just throw it out there.
I guess I would be more in favor of a, instead of a standard number, I like the idea of a certain percentage of households or population. You know, something that, that may, that may fluctuate. So that if, yeah, that just may fluctuate, instead of just a hard, fast number.
Fair enough. So even if you went with thirty-three, new census comes out in thirty and says we're.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I don't know how that looks.
Well.
I don't know if that's like just a starting point, that they do a percentage? Or, I mean, cause yeah, what happens if the population drops? Then what do you do? Then like a couple people?
Liquor licenses, they, you just don't get it. If, that doesn't get renewed, it drops off and you never see it again.
So it'd say that we would be allowing thirty-three now, but then according to population, we would only allow thirty. As long as those thirty-three renew, follow the rules, they would be able to renew every year until they don't.
Yeah, that's.
We just wouldn't issue new.
That's six fifteen six. Yeah, that's this one. They're not subject to said limit.
So you'd end up with what you've got, like Amy said, not subject to said limit. So you end up with what you've got.
As long as they were pre-existing.
Yeah. And then when you come up with your number, so if they start going below that number, then you issue more, as they drop off. But if they're higher, then you don't issue more. So I think to address the concern of, of some of the audience folks is, yeah, where do we come up with that number?
Yeah, so I don't know, I'm, I feel like, like, doing it based on population would be fair. I mean, it's.
Okay.
I just don't know what percent, you know, I mean, I feel like, I feel like one percent would give us thirty-two that are not owner occupied.
Okay.
And then, you know, I guess, and also maybe we need to see what we have too. This, if we have twenty-seven that are here now, and they get the permits like they're supposed to, we'll let them get those permits. And then, then we know that, uh, well, twenty-five's not enough.
Yes. Downside to that is you lock it in this ordinance and you find out it's not enough, and you gotta go through the whole process again, so.
Or then maybe we set it at thirty-five, whatever.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, I'm not arguing, I'm just, you know, that's why we're having this discussion. So I mean, if you guys would feel comfortable with thirty-two, then that's what we can get presented at the, or if you guys wanna get really complicated, you can set that number by resolution also and go with the population when the census comes out.
Wait a minute, say that one more time.
So say if you really wanna get it complicated, you can set your number also by resolution when your new census comes out. So if you wanna do one percent, which is thirty-two, so let's say your new census comes out and says, population's twenty-eight hundred. So, if you've, if you've got that floating percentage, then you go to twenty-eight. But if you wanna lock that hard number in to change that hard number in an ordinance, you gotta redo the whole ordinance. As opposed to just your resolution, like we're doing the fees.
So would the, if we would do it with the resolution, would we have to do a percentage, or could we do?
You do whatever you wanna do. I'm just saying, you lock it in an ordinance to change it, you gotta redo the whole ordinance, which is through your two readings.
Okay, so, if we, no, 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 no. So if we took out the number part of it in the ordinance, then the number and the fee would just be set by resolution, which is just, which is a lot easier.
That's how we do our water bills.
Yes. I mean, that's an option, actually. I feel like that, that's.
So, okay. What do you guys think down there? So you just wanna take the number and do that by resolution also, so you can adjust it? I'm gonna say, so we do our water rates, cause we used to have to, every time we'd change a water rate, we would have to, um, redo the whole ordinance, and then we put in the original ordinance, we would just set the rates by resolution, so. Okay.
So then you would just take out that whole six fifteen six?
Or just change it to say that's like the.
Set by resolution.
Set by resolution. Yeah.
The only thing that bugs me a little bit about that is, that might be fine for this council, but we get a council down the line that doesn't want Airbnbs and they set it at ten. Or vice versa, they set it at a hundred.
Okay. I mean, they could, if, if you had it in the ordinance, they could go through the two readings of the ordinance and do the same thing, so.
That's true.
I mean, and I'm not trying to debate or throw the counterpoint at you, I'm just, like I said, ordinance just takes one reading, one publication. Or, I'm sorry, resolution takes one reading, one publication, ordinance takes two readings, one publication. So, if that just frees everything up. But, yeah, the whole next council could come in and say, we're just gonna repeal all this stuff. Then you're back to no ordinance. So, anyway. But if you guys feel more comfortable with resolution, then we can bring resolutions. So back to Amy's question, is there heartburn with the ordinance minus the number?
The trans, the non-transfer is a big issue for, for me, I think, for our community, because there are families that invest greatly in this community, and the families want to continue. and the families want to continue to do that as family members.
And again, not a lawyer, but I'm almost thinking that would be in your corporate stuff, you know.
Well, it, that's the thing too, is if you, if it's owned by, I'm just, I'll just say Hafda Rentals, then you guys are both owners of that. If you're listed on the LLC as both owners.
What if the sole proprietor had rental properties though, and owned multiple properties? You know, what if they don't have a LLC or whatever, and it's a sole proprietor, but they have a loved family that's going to inherit these properties? I mean, I, I just hate for, you know, I just see so many issues if those properties are taken off the market completely, because if he doesn't want.
I, I understand exactly what you're thinking, and I get it, but I don't think that's our problem. You know, the carry-on part of it, something would happen to Dave, that you stand in line for that, I think that's something, you have to do it in your own estate planning, so that happens.
But the license doesn't transfer.
What, that's, I mean, that's why you have to figure that part of it out. So. I, I don't know that that's our problem, is it, that it transferred to the next person? And I'm not trying to be mean about it, I'm just saying, I don't know that, we, we have a lot of moving pieces here already.
How does it work with the liquor license?
Well, they're non-transferable, but the, like the. What's that? Yeah, they transfer through city council, but I don't know how they're all transferred from an individual, other than.
So.
Through city council.
Through city council.
So say Amy has a liquor license, she passes away, and in her will, she says, I want rights to my liquor license to go to my son. Is that possible?
You still have to do, yes, you still have to do the transfer, but whoever is representative of her estate.
Would do, would be the.
Does need to work in the transfer.
So.
So I kinda feel like, is, if we model it after the liquor license like that, 'cause that's working, I mean, that solves the non-transfer, non-transferable issue.
I think it does, I, I don't see it being an issue, I see it, for lack of a better term, I see it more as a fear, you know, on, on your side, as opposed to, you know, the transferability, I think, you know.
I just wanna be prepared for the future.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I see that, but.
Yeah, right.
Houses invested, and all of a sudden something happens, all of a sudden you're on the outside of the fence, I understand.
Right, and then the list is long, and I have to get behind everybody to get a license, and I can't, or, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, it's a, it's a valid question, that's something we should look into too, 'cause I see a tree above it.
Yeah, I, I, I know, I think that doing it like the liquor license would alleviate a lot of that.
I think so for a lot of people.
So, I mean, and, you know, with there's, the, when there's a transfer of a license with the liquor license, you know, there is a fee with it, and, and you know, so, I do, I think that would be a, a good option.
Okay, 'cause I know, I think we set the record for four liquor license transfers in one council meeting, and a liquor store wasn't even open. So, I mean, the, the transfers all went through, you just had to go through that legal process, so I don't, yeah, anyway. Do anything else? We've probably covered a whole lot more than we wanted, so, um, Heather, you?
You had one, Dave has one more question.
As I say, is there anything else from the council, 'cause what'll happen is Heather will compile all of this stuff, we'll start pushing it out, and, and bring it to the first reading in March.
On the inspection, I'm sorry.
No.
Does a South Dakota housing voucher count as having your property inspected, or does it have to be through the department, or the state, or?
If I understand the administrative rules right, that, the, the lodging license comes from the health department, now.
And that has to be acquired before you even apply for the permit?
So when you come into that calendar, like this ordinance says, you'll have all these, you'll have everything in order, then you'll apply. And if everything is in order, they're gonna send out the, the first class mail to everybody in the neighborhood. And then the city council is probably gonna have, have the public hearing, so that's where the integrity of the residential neighborhood gets protected, as opposed to the zoning board. So, you come in, everything's in order, we send everything out to tell everybody, hey, there's an Airbnb in your neighborhood, we have a public hearing. So it'll be just like this, it'll be, just like I did this o- other liquor license, is there anybody here speak for or against it? If there's people here, they come up, they say their piece, and then we make the decision based on that, so. That's how I see this happening, through this ordinance, I don't know if that answers your question, but. Okay, so, Heather, you got everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, a lot of moving parts here. A lot of things we haven't done before, so here we are. Uh, I wanna take us to the last item up for discussion, I did visit with Jim Hock, hopefully this discussion's a lot quicker, 'cause I'm gonna tell you what I think. Um, lease fee trade with the county, Jim Hock and I were talking, the county sent us a check for whatever they sent us the check for, forty-five hundred dollars. They leased the space in the fire hall for the emergency manager. Jim and I were talking, uh, city and county worked together, um, I don't believe we're gonna cash that check, or if we do, write it back to them. Anyway, my proposition, uh, they wanna trade, my proposition, uh, to, to take back to them, and I'll mention it to you guys, is we can offer them three years of no rent, no cash, no nothing, just, you know, keep your emergency manager in that facility, but what I would like is, since they gave us that old dilapidated Schmidt property, when we get to the point of tearing that down and removing it, we take it to their landfill. The only reason I'm saying three years is that's as long as we can enter into a contract, so. How's everybody feel about that?
Would it just be tied to that one property, that, you know, we're, we're trading this rent for landfill fees for this property?
I would say just on, on, for the amount of money, yeah, just the one property. Yeah, the rest of them, they're coming up, and I don't even, the only thing the Schmidt property is, is it's enormous, it's huge. Um, just as, you know, while people are listening, um, that is gonna crush the general fund of the city if we have to take that down by ourself. So yeah, every little bit of help we can get to get rid of that will be okay, so. So that's what I was thinking, to offer them, uh, if you guys are on board with it, um, and we'll see if they wanna do that or not. Okay. Public forum and visitors, is anybody here to talk to the council about anything we have not talked about tonight? Okay, uh, hearing on, I'll take us to pavement of the bills, um, bills are in your packet, I'll look for a motion to approve the bills, if there's no questions or comments.
Some of.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Kevins?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
If there's no other business before the council, I would, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Who's the second, I'm sorry?
Me.
Mound?
Yes.
Cerny?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kevins?
Yes.
Hey, meeting is adjourned, thanks everyone.